Good morning. I'm going to call to order the special council meeting of the Jackson City Council. Today's date is August 26th and it is 10:00 a.m. We will go ahead and begin with the invocation from the Pastor John Wick of Mount Nebo Missionary Baptist Church, Ward 5, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Ashby Foot. Please stand. Notice I said "the." Good morning. Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done in earth as it is in heaven. Dear God, we come this morning acknowledging that it is indeed another beautiful day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins and rose again, oh God. We thank you for this great city. We thank you for our leadership. We ask that you would bless now our leadership, bless Mayor Horn, bless President Griselle, bless all of our council persons, bless all of their staff. Oh God, bless this meeting. We know that you are an able God to do exceeding abundantly above all we ask or think. We ask your blessings upon these United States of America. Bless President Trump, bless our Congress, bless Governor Reeves. Oh God, just be with us all, lead us and guide us. We ask for your touch. We read in your word where you said, "If my people that are called by my name will humble themselves in prayer and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven forgive their sin and heal the land." We ask your healing upon the land. We give you the glory in advance for the great things you're about to do in Jackson, Mississippi. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you Pastor Wick for that amazing prayer. Colleagues, any opening comments or statements this morning? None? All right, well, we're going to go ahead and get into this agenda. We have one agenda item, public comment, and we have five non-agenda item, public comments. We're going to go ahead and take the agenda item first. Agenda item 51, Ms. Pippa Jackson, animal control. When you come for public comment, please state your name for the record. You will have approximately three minutes for public comment. At the two and a half minute mark, the clerk here will sign, will signal to you that you have 30 seconds left, okay? At that point, or once your three minutes are up, she will then signal to you with a red flag that you have run out of time, and then at that point, we ask that you cease. Thank you so much. You may proceed.
I don't intend to take up three minutes.
It's easy to do.
Good morning. I'm Pippa Jackson, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Mississippi Animal Rescue Collective. We're a group of six animal rescue organizations representing the metro, working to assist the city with issues associated with the closed city animal shelter. The city animal shelter has been closed since October of 2021, and the animal welfare agencies are bearing the responsibility and the cost associating with, associated with there being no city shelter. With this new administration, we have renewed hope that we can assist in creating an animal control program that is reflective of the values of Jacksonians and is consistent with the gained knowledge regarding the care and treatment of companion animals. We are offering our combined experience of knowledge to work with the city to update the animal control ordinance, to provide an ordinance that provides a humane outcome for the companion animals for the city, and an animal control division that is transparent and responsive to these goals. We, the collective, wish to work with the city council to help the city become a leader in the state regarding companion animals, their welfare, and the greater good of the city. I didn't take up three minutes.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Now, this item will come up a little later, so if you want to hang out, I'm not sure if Councilman Foot will.
I'll be happy to stay.
All right, thank you.
And I go this way, is it?
Yes. All right, now, we have non-agenda items. Again, the same rules apply, three minutes. Please come forward, state your name for the record, and then you will be under the same rule, two and a half minutes, and then you'll be notified you have 30 seconds left, and then cease at three minutes. Thank you so much. Shanti Wallace, child issues. Shanti Wallace, child issues. Carl Wonsley, infrastructure issues in the neighborhood. Carl Wonsley, infrastructure issues in the neighborhood. James Taylor, harassment by JPD. James Taylor, harassment by JPD. Daryl Harden, group home negligent and, neglect and harassment. Daryl Harden, group home neglect and harassment. Representative Fabian Nelson, proposed ordinance for nightclubs.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Fabian Nelson, Mississippi House of Representatives, District 66. How you doing, Mayor Horn? We miss you over there in the building, not too far from here. Decided to come down here and see you.
I miss you, too.
I'm sure we'll be crying in January. First, I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to come and speak on behalf of my citizens in regard to a concern that we have been seeing happening. I also want to thank Councilman Kenneth Stokes for his leadership and his support and dedication to his constituents. We were just at a rally over on Freedom Corner to talk about the violence and things, so thank you for always, for your citizens. When I saw you showing up, I said, "I'm not even worried about it. I know it's going to get taken care of." Now, I have given you, it should be on your desk, a proposed, just some suggestions on the ordinance that I think would be beneficial to the city of Jackson. Not to be an overreach, you know, I trust that y'all are going to do your job effectively as y'all have been doing. We're really proud of the momentum that we're seeing here in the city of Jackson. But, you know, in this ordinance, I'm just asking that, you know, we, for the nightclubs, that we have stricter zoning requirements to exclude residential neighborhoods, as well as provide some sort of security to make sure our patrons are able to go out in a safe manner. So, those are two things that I'm asking for. And once again, I'm trusting y'all that y'all are going to do everything that y'all need to do. I'm here to be supportive. I'm here to see if there's any legislation that needs to be authored across the street to help y'all with the efforts as to what y'all are trying to do. But we're all just happy with the fresh energy on this council, the fresh energy from the mayor's office. Thank y'all. I told you I'm not going to be three minutes. Mr. President, did I do okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Now, Councilman, I mean, not Councilman, Representative. Thank you. Representative Nelson, I think what we're going to try to do is call a Public Safety and Parks Committee meeting, and that way, we can kind of, you know, flesh a lot of this out, address concerns, and maybe try to get on the same page with the municipal legislative body, and then we can go from there. I think it'll be a good way to have buy-in and have, you know, intel or input from all council members. Thank you.
Absolutely. Great to start the conversation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Mr. President, I just want to take a second to thank this hard-working elected official who, who will not quit fighting for the citizens of this city. You know, we said when the police officer were hurt, if she hurt, we hurt. If one person in this city is killed or hurt, if those families are suffering, we're suffering. And it's just special that state representative will say, "What can I do to help?" And that's what we need to hear in Jackson. What can I do to help to make sure we can stop the violence and make sure we can stop the nonsense? And I thank you so much for coming to City Hall, because others need to come who won't come. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, now, Representative Nelson, I will say, open care. That's the thorn in our side. But we'll talk about that in the, in the Public Safety Committee meeting.
(inaudible).
All right. Thank you so much. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and move to the consent agenda.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly second. And we know, colleagues, we know that consent agenda items cannot be discussed unless there's a request to remove an item, and I know we talked about several of these items at length yesterday during the work session. Councilman Foot, you have a question?
Yeah, the, I just wanted to make a point to tell all the council members that we've got a quick response from the city regarding the question I asked yesterday during the discussion, the consent agenda, on where we stood on our balances in dealing with the demolition balance we had. And I'll point out that for the individual home general demo funds, we're now in a deficit of $21,160 after the spending on these right here. On the commercial demo, we have an ending balance of $918,733 still left. So, I just wanted to make those points known regarding the questions I asked yesterday. I'm all for, for doing the demolition and stuff, but we just got to be, stay within our budgets.
Excellent point. Thank you, Mr. Foot. All right, colleagues, I want to go.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Could we remove item 18 so I could discuss it, please?
Sure. One second. I don't need to put that to a vote, do I? I do. Okay. So, colleagues, there is a motion from Councilman Stokes to remove item 18 for discussion. Second. Okay, it's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Seven zero? All right, thank you. So, that item is removed, and we go ahead and vote on claim, I mean, not on claims, but on the consent agenda. He's, well, he wants to discuss it, but we're going to go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. All right. All right, so all in favor of the consent agenda? Oppose? Seven zero? All right, thank you. I'm looking at y'all now, clerks. Introduction of ordinances?
18.
He gets, okay, all right, go ahead, Mr. Stokes. Can you put it on the floor? All right, thank you.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Jackson and Socrates Garrett Enterprises, Inc., to demolish a structure, remove foundation steps, foundation steps, driveway, cut grass and weed, remove trash and debris, and to perform other work to remedy the conditions on private property that constitute a menace to public health, safety, and welfare according to Mississippi Code Annotated Section 21-19-11 for case CE-25-57 located at 3015 Holmes Avenue, Parcel 405-383.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I ask that to be removed so I can discuss the item that we have in front of us today. Mr. Mayor, someone, how far are we behind in these orders? We have proven orders to tear down and things of that nature. Are we up to date? Are we a year behind? So, we'll have an idea where we are when we vote on these items. We keep voting on them, but are we current? Somebody? Anybody? If not, right, get a memo, let her.
Leconia Miller, Code Services. So, we are not very behind. If you look at the resolutions, we are doing 24 and 25 case numbers right now.
So, we still doing 24?
We are still doing 24, 25, yes.
But we're not until we complete with 23, 22, all that is completely done?
So, if they have not been done and have not been contracted, a year after they've been approved by you all, they expire and they would have to be started over. So, that's why you see the current case number, so we're not behind as far as.
Okay. Now, what I'm saying, you're saying they expire?
Yes. Once you all approve the resolution, we have a year to have, have it demolished, and when we don't, those have to be renewed. So, we're not behind as far as what's, what's before you. That, that case number on 18 is a 2025 case number.
Okay. Now, the concern is that people in these older neighborhoods have had these problems. They're written on the house as though they're going to be torn down. Nothing happens. The city is taking the position, "Oh, this has expired," but the citizens don't know. So, can we find a better way to do this, and still the same way, if we don't get it done, it ain't going to be done?
So, what we're trying to do now is get more contractors, because we get to that stage where we only have a handful of contractors, and we have to wait on their timeline once it gets to that notice to proceed state. And if they don't get to it in a timely manner, again, they, they expire, and we have to start over.
Is that by ordinance that it expires or changed to ordinance?
It's 21-19-11.
Can, can you give us a copy? We need to modify that, because it's not fair to these citizens who think these houses or something are going to be torn down, that year expired, and nothing is going to happen. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
We need to, we need, thank you, Ms. Miller. We need to, I'm sorry.
So, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. After one year, if it's not torn down, nothing is done, it has to start over?
Yes.
So, that means we're not really current. We're just washing away. Yeah, we just taking them off and put, yeah, we're not current at all, because all the old properties are still out there. So, it looks like we're doing something and we're not. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
Just, Mr. Hartley? Yeah, just one comment. We appreciate working with you, Councilman Foot, and I appreciate working with you on the blight control, and I see that as a big problem as well, the fact that we have repeat offenders and nothing's happening. And so, I would invite, we, we will come up with a meeting, and everyone will be invited to attend, where we have to, we have to discuss stronger requirements, stronger penalties, so these folks don't just get used to us waiting us out, and then nothing happens. So, I appreciate that. We'll be contacting your office. Thank you.
Mr. President, there's work to do. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. And blighted elimination is something that we're all concerned about, and the administration is currently in discuss.
Mr. Mayor, if you could speak into your mic, I'm not sure what's going on with them.
Blight elimination is something we're all concerned about, and the Office of the Mayor is, is working with code enforcement to try to come up with a better plan than what we've got right now. We've got to be a lot more determined to eliminate blight in our city, so in the coming weeks, we'll be coming with some additional recommendations.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clay.
When you said there are a limited number of contractors, what is the bid process? What is the process to be a contractor? Because I'm sure there are more contractors than we are using.
Yeah, they, they, Samantha Grace, to many improvement, they have to meet certain requirements. We have them have a license, insurance, pollution insurance, general liability insurance, business license, state license, things of that nature. So, it's not really hard. The thing is, we bid out a lot of stuff, so maybe the same contractor may win that bid.
But I'm saying, general public, how do we know when the bid is accepted and what's going on?
If it's a open bid, it'll be put on the state website, the city website, and then we'll also put it in the paper. But if you're an internal contractor, when we have internal bids, we'll put that out to the internal contractors.
Last question. What is an internal contractor?
Those are the ones that have met the requirements with the city, and once they meet the requirement with the city, we put them on a list, and when bids come out, we'll send it out to the internals.
So, it's very limited who's selected?
Right. But we, we advertise for contractors. We have flyers out. We do reach out, so if they want to be a contractor, we'll send the information, and then once they send us the information back that we require, then it'll be added to the list.
Today, I brought with me the first meeting that I attended, and the prices have gone up extremely differently from the prices from November to now. I know we have inflation, but we are up about $3,000 or $4,000 on these bids, so something is unique about these bids.
So, some of it is due to whether we have to do abatement. Abatement will raise the prices. Some of them, we have to declare full abatement, and if so, that'll raise the price as well. It also depends on how big the house is and how big the lot is.
Later discussion, I think we need to come up with a better way of pricing and a better way of accepting, because we can do something better than we're doing.
Mr. President? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, sometimes they call it old business, because in the old days, once you vote these in, they were going to be done. It wasn't a restriction about time. If this is not done within a year, then you just have to wait. They brought a new director in some years back, and she started this, anything that's old, we're not going to do it. The only thing the citizens, while they didn't mind waiting, but they don't like the idea if they wait a year, then it's never going to happen. So, we go back to the old way, that once they vote these in, it's going to happen. Now, if it's not a year, and it'll take a year and a half, then we still going to get it done.
Yeah, the process isn't working, and so, we need to streamline the process and update it to where it's logical, makes sense, and it's expeditious, and that's what we'll be working towards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, thank you. All right, any more questions or comments about this item? Councilwoman Brown Thomas has stepped out, going to go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? Six zero. Thank you. All right, now, colleagues, we're going to have introduction of ordinances.
An ordinance of the city of Jackson, Mississippi, authorizing the Jackson Police Department to issue solicitation permits pursuant to the State of Mississippi Safe Solicitation Act, House Bill 1197, effective July 1st, 2025.
All right, colleagues, this is just an introduction. This will go through the regular process, and you'll have an opportunity to ask questions later on. Chief Wade, you have anything to say about this?
The council, Homa Mayor, the $25 is the most that can be charged for that permit, so I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted that part. We can't make any money off of this. That's the most that you can charge for that permit, and want to make sure that panhandlers who want to panhandle legally has a pathway to do that.
All right, thank you, chief. Item 25.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, honorary renaming the portion of Nuffview Drive to, from Hartfield Street to East May Street as Martin L. Shields Drive Memorial Way in honor of fallen duty Sergeant Martin L. Shields, Jr.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is just an introduction. I spoke with Councilman Parkinson about this, and he said, you know, basically, we'll have plenty of time to ask questions, and he'll clarify anything at that point in time. I think it'd be on the next agenda, right, clerks? Right? Yes, okay. Thank you. All right, now, colleagues, we're going to go to claims, but before we go to claims, we need to first take item 41.
Order ratifying payment to CTEC LLC for mold assessments performed at Thoma Memorial Hall paid pursuant to the mayor's emergency declarations.
So moved. It's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments about item 41? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. All right, now, we have claims.
Order proving claims appearing at pages 649 to inclusive thereon, a municipal docket of claims in the amount of $5,519,649.12 for making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. It's been moved improperly second. Mr. Malinbecker, if you could cover large claims, please.
Mr. President, good morning. Fidelis Malinbecker, interim CFO. We do have an amendment to make, and this is in reference to the item you just approved. And this is a payment to CTEC LLC in the amount of $14,381.20.
Is there a motion? Second. You got it. All right, all right, it's been moved improperly second. To add this item to claims, any questions or comments? All in favor? All right, so now, we have claims as amended.
All right. So, the four largest claims on this docket are as follows. First, Richard's Disposal Incorporated of Jackson in the amount of $851,000, paid out of Fund 9 sanitation landfill. This is for residential collection, July 2025. Second is IMS engineers in the amount of $784,726.50, paid out of Fund 372 modernization tax. This is for 75% completion of task order number two for street design resurfacing. Third is McInnis Electric in the amount of $497,040.82, paid out of Fund 420, M.CMPDD, and Funds 372 modernization tax. This is for State Street Signal Project. And the fourth is Entergy in the amount of $377,253.72, paid out of Fund 1, General Fund. This is for streetlights.
All right, thank you, Mr. Malinbecker. All right, colleagues, any questions or comments about claims as amended?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foot?
Thank you. My question really is concerned just about the modernization tax that came up in the discussions yesterday at the work session. And can you tell us what, how much we realize, and this is the internet tax that is allocated out from the state? What's our annual receipts of modernization tax, an estimate of that, for how much we get per year?
So, it, it has gotten up to $10.6 million.
For, that's for the course of a year?
For the course of the year, and we receive the payments in two tranches. In January, we receive half, and in July, we receive the other half.
Okay, and there's limits on how that can be spent, isn't there?
That's correct.
Like on infrastructure or something to that effect?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Malinbecker. Entergy, how much was that figure again?
$253.72.
Okay, and that's for street lighting throughout the city?
Correct.
Okay, we had Entergy here yesterday during the public works meeting and asking some questions about lights being out and so forth. And if you don't mind, I'd like to, if you could provide a copy of their, whatever contracts or legal information, describing our relationship, if I can get a copy of that.
Sure. We'll make that request.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. I want to follow up with what Councilmember Hartley just stated, because it's not fair that in certain neighborhoods, lights are out, they never get repaired, they telling older people to go get numbers off a pole, you know, that's their job, you know? So, it makes no sense, and I know some councilmen say, "If we hold their money, then all the lights will be out." So, Mr. Mayor, we need your help to create a win-win in that situation, because Entergy should have people out at night, and their sea lights out, and they can make the repairs, and that's just common sense. My concern is riches, and I understand, Mr. Mayor, we, from the conversation we had at the council meeting, we might, we might cannot reverse, I think, solid waste, but I'm concerned when there's a criminal involvement, then the whole contract can be looked at as being illegal. Now, I'm saying that because the city is trashing. This is a $100 million contract, and the city look bad. Well, we just going to pick up garbage, pick up what's out there for $100 million? It shouldn't be the capital city look like we some kind of trash being in certain parts of this city, and they just pass by it, won't pick it up. Citizens calling us every day. They didn't pick up this, they didn't pick up. Citizens calling us every day. They didn't pick up this, they didn't pick up that. So we need to revisit this. Uh, legal, I hope we can look and see we have some indictments. If some of those indictments have to do a deal with Richards, if there's some conversation at that level, then I think we can revisit the whole thing. But there's no way we should give a hundred million dollars to anybody, black, white, or purple, where the trash is not being picked up, and this city look at trash. They said, look, that's one issue. The second issue is we need to revisit the people that's supposed to be picking up trash. I'm not just talking about Richards. We have a side contract with people saying we gonna pick up trash in this city, and it's not being done. So I normally bring that back up because it makes no sense for citizens in this city to keep calling council members and asking council members, why is this city so trashy? And we're saying we paying people, and they saying the job is not being done. So Richards might be a side issue for another company, Mr. Mayor, that we paying hundreds of thousands of dollars who's supposed to pick up trash in this city, and it must not be done. I know it's not done daily because the city wouldn't be looking so trashy. Weeds, limbs, all kind of stuff all over this city, and nobody's responding, but the citizens think we dropping the ball. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, legal, for looking at this in terms of the legal aspects. If there's some indictments out here, that mean this contract might be null and void. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, any more questions or comments on claims? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Five two. Thank you. Payroll?
Order approving gross payroll including payroll deduction claims number three two five four seven two appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
I just been moving it properly second. And the questions or comments on payroll? Hearing none. All in favor? All right, thank you. Now, colleagues, we have, uh, two confirmations. Uh, item twenty-eight, please.
Order appointing Thomas Price, Thomas Price to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second. Been moving it properly second. Is Mr. Price here? Come forward, Mr. Price. Mayor, you have any introductions that you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, both of these nominations are gentlemen who are eminently qualified, uh, in the arenas of historic preservation. Uh, Mr. Price, uh, has an excellent background in that regard. Uh, he is, uh, a nomination of, well, a recommendation, I should say, of, uh, Councilman, uh, Parkinson, and, uh, Councilman Parkinson vouched for his veracity and, and qualifications.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, now colleagues, we're gonna take this as usual, one round of questions or comments, and then we'll hear from Mr. Price if he has anything to say, and then we'll take it from there. Start it with Ward One.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, um, I have no questions for Mr. Price at this point in time. I appreciate your willingness to serve on this commission.
Thank you. Ward Two?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Ward Three?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, I got the vote against Mr. Price. Um, I just feel that he's not qualified to deal with, uh, historical preservation. I think that his knowledge base is limited. I'm just joking.
I wouldn't agree with the same reservation.
This young man is a true example.
You gotta switch up your material now, council.
This is a good young man who have worked hard. He, uh, he is example, uh, black and white really working together and achieving. This young man could have made excuses after excuse after excuse. He stayed in school, where we tell people all the time, no matter where you start, it's where you finish. But we're out of poverty, it's through education. And this young man is a true example of that theory, and I've known him for years, and I've watched him grow, 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 and I'm so proud of him. I'm so very proud because we see young people in these neighborhoods that the zip code might not be acceptable, and they give up. And you are the type of person that inspire other young people to stay in school. Don't make excuses, because you could have made excuses and quit and everything else, but you didn't do it. Your family proud of you, your community proud of you, everyone proud of your hard work and not giving up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Ward Five?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thanks for stepping up, volunteering. And Mr. Stokes had me going there for a minute, okay? Uh, put me in a dilemma. Uh, but one thing I would ask is to continue to look at West Jackson, South Jackson, everything with, you know, civil rights markers, historic houses. Uh, we're rich with that, and as we clean up, continue to clean up, we, it's gonna stand out. So if you wouldn't mind, just kind of keep bending back your head, but look forward to you serving, sir, and thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ward Six?
No question, but thank you.
Thank you. Ward Seven?
Mr. Stokes, you're lucky you're my favorite. And Mr. Price, I think you're exceedingly well qualified tonight. Thank you for your services.
All right, thank you. Uh, and I have no reservations about this nomination. Do we need another round of questions or comments, colleagues?
No.
All right, hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and vote. All in favor? Seven zero. Congratulations, Mr. Price. Did you bring anybody here with you today that you'd like to?
No, sir.
Solo dolo. Good job. All right, thank you, Mr. Price.
Appreciate it.
Item twenty-nine?
Order appointing Jason Agostinelli to the Historic Preservation Commission.
So moved. Second.
Been moving it properly second. Is Mr. Agostinelli here? All right, uh, Mayor, you have an introduction, or you wanna yield to?
I will yield to, uh, Councilman Parkinson.
All right, Mr. Parkinson?
Thank you. Did have the chance to meet with Mr. Agostinelli. He couldn't be here today, but he did. He before, are they working? Okay. Uh, swayed by yesterday for the work session to meet the council people.
Back up some, see if that works. It didn't work.
I just think both of these individuals are extremely well qualified, and I'll also point out, um, the most recent Historic Preservation Commission meeting had to be canceled for lack of quorum. And so I think it's important to fill this commission and make sure that they can do their important work, and I think the two gentlemen that we have up are fantastic additions to that group.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Uh, colleagues, again, we're gonna take this one round and then figure out the rest. Uh, start with Ward One.
The, I don't have any questions at this point in time.
Thank you. Ward Two?
No questions.
All right, thank you. Ward Three?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, I want to thank the mayor for the, uh, direction trying to take historical preservation. Uh, we're trying to put people, uh, on this particular board who really truly understand what's supposed to take place. We have Meg Elvis Historical District, Mr. Mayor, and we, we complained to the park service because they have outdoor toilets, and we know they can do better than that. So I thank you so much for caring. The Margaret Walker Alexander home is in unbelievable disrepair. So we hope this commission can get in here and not only vote on things, but find us some money also. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Five?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and again, I appreciate, uh, the, uh, any type of volunteer stepping up, especially ones that are qualified as, as these candidates. So I look forward to endorsing them.
Ward Six?
No questions.
Ward Seven?
No additional questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, now colleagues, well, for, for anybody listening, I do want to just reiterate, you have to be really qualified to be appointed to this board. You have to have some kind of background, uh, in architecture. And so, uh, this is one of those commissions that we do really appreciate the work. We know that Jackson is a historic city. We have a lot of historic sites, and so, uh, thank you for bringing this one forward, Mr. Mayor. All right, gonna go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you, colleagues. Item thirty.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Deborah Ellis to provide administrative support for the Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Been moving it properly second. Any questions or comments?
Just Hartley? Just one question. Uh, do we know when the, uh, Civil Service Commission will be, will be started? Do we know when they will start up?
No, I, I don't have a specific time. What, what we've said to Commissioners Whitley, Prosper, uh, and Reverend Moore is that we want them to get started as quickly as possible. And toward that end, um, the, um, appointment of Ms. Ellis as intended to help to expedite that, she comes with several decades of experience, uh, in regard to, um, HR matters, but in particular, the Civil Service Commission.
And I appreciate that. Uh, she is a outstanding pick. I've worked with her in the past. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Item thirty-one.
Resolution authorizing and approving an amendment to certain provisions in the parameters resolution as approved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Jackson, Mississippi, the city on February 13th, 2024 in connection with the execution and delivery of a promissory note, Jackson, Mississippi Infrastructure Modernization Tax Revenue Bond Project in the principal amount of not to exceed $40 million, the note to secure a loan, the loan to the city from the Mississippi Development Bank Special Obligation Bonds.
So moved.
It's been moving it properly second. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, um, when this item first came to this body, it was stated that the council would help decide on streets to be paved. Then we heard it's gonna be drainage issues, and I know this is going to trip the money. Are they gonna change? Have you looked at which direction you think you want to take? Well, we gonna use more for streets? We gonna use more for, for drainage issues? Um, have you thought about which direction, Mayor?
Mr. President, if I may?
Give me.
Yeah, uh, it, the primary, uh, amount is going to be used for street repair and resurfacing. We have a number of streets that are on, on tap right now to be resurfaced under, um, uh, I think it's called B one, or one B of the 1% sales tax and one C of the 1% sales tax, but there's still a lot of streets left to, that need resurfacing, and the majority of this 40 million is gonna go toward that end.
Amen.
And I'd be happy to sit, sit down with any member of the council to, uh, get your preferences about what areas in your own board you'd like to see addressed.
Well, that's what, that's how it got approved the first time.
Right.
Because they said it was gonna be streets.
Yes.
Then it went to war.
Well, you know, we do have some, some drainage issues that need to be addressed, but, but the majority of this money is going towards resurfacing.
Thank you. Glad to hear it. Now, colleagues, we do have, okay, go ahead, Mr. Parkinson.
Uh, first, a question. I mean, it does state that the money will be used roughly equal in each of the seven wards. That remains true?
I'm not aware of, of that condition, but I have no problems with that.
I, I believe it said that unless there was a vote by council. Um, and then my, what I didn't see in here is what the interest rate is and the total cost.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor Trey Hairston, uh, here on behalf of the city with Butler Snow. Um, you're correct, this financing started almost two years ago now, and to your question, um, the reason that we're here before the council to amend the resolution is because of a term sheet that we received from Capital One, and Capital One has provided this city, uh, with a rate of 3.7, I'm sorry, 4.79%, which is a, a pretty strong rate. It's a private placement. Initially, this transaction started off as a limited offering, uh, transaction, and we struggled to find traction, and, um, the mayor made some adjustments with the finance team, and, um, that financial advisor was able to go out and execute and find a purchaser. So we're looking at, um, based on what Mr. Malinbecker said, you receive a little over $10 million on an annual basis in January and July from use tax or modernization monies. Debt service for this particular transaction starts off, um, in 2.9, 2.8, and then it goes up to about 3.6, not to exceed 15 years. And so, based on the statute, you are able to use the money for paving, uh, you can use the money for drainage. You ha, also have the ability to use the money per an amendment from Angela Turner in this past legislative session. You can use the, the, the money on buildings as well, publicly on buildings, but, um, as the resolution states, which is how we got it passed the initial time, pro rata share for each ward unless agreed upon by the council.
And, Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, just to add to that, um, the, the, the building in question in, in this case, Stallamar Hall, uh, we have got to get that, that facility, uh, back to its, its past glory. And so, uh, um, and, and as I say, this particular case, any building improvements will be directed towards Stallamar. I do want to, to say how much we appreciate, uh, getting a new financial advisor has meant, uh, to, uh, this effort. Government Consultants is our new financial advisor, and they have a real go-getter who, uh, was able to help us find Capital One and, and get these, uh, really good rates.
Good deal, Mr. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know we need our audit, that, and, and I know you're on top of that. Without the audit and everything associated with it, we can't move forward with a major bond issue. And we all realize, and it's been a while since we had a major bond issue, that each ward needs some major work. So could we, as you get these go-getters, get someone who can make sure we can get this audit thing behind us? We need to know what's the fund balance, and we probably gonna have to use some of the fund balance to balance the budget we in now. But this time next year, with your leadership, the train ought to be on the track, and we can roll smoothly like we used to. Thank you.
Nothing like pressure, Mr. Councilman. Um, Mr. President, I, I'll say that, that, um, uh, we had thought that, uh, a, a, um, a contract, uh, for consideration by the council to hire Mr. Michael Thomas was going to be ready for, for today. Mr. Thomas, uh, has served the CFO of Jackson Public Schools, CFO of the city of Jackson, and CFO of Jackson State University. He's currently president of, uh, systems, um, um, systems businesses right now. Uh, he is eminently qualified to help us move forward in terms of, yes, uh, again, six years of audit experience to help us get to, to this audit. So we want him to help us ramrod getting this, this 23 audit done so that we can get, uh, uh, to the next couple of audits after that, and we're very anxious to get him on board. And we think he'll, he'll help us get to where we're trying to get a year from now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, um, uh, we've got a really big meeting booked today, and a big chunk of that meeting book is thanks to Mr. Hairston and his work, uh, putting together this bond documents. And so I got a couple of questions. I'm trying to reduce about 100 pages down to about, um, an index card worth of notes here. So the, the, you mentioned 2.9, up, up to 3.6, that would be the debt service that we'd be paying each year. So we've got 10.6 million coming in from the modernization tax that would go to cover that, plus leave us, I guess, some extra money.
Right.
So it gives us upfront $40 million to, to go to work on our streets.
Correct.
Does, does, uh, I guess this question will be for the mayor and the administration. Uh, I mean, the whole purpose of a bond thing is to get your money quicker so that you can put it to work quicker for the citizens. So do you have, um, any particular, I mean, we're gonna be spending $10 million a year out of this money, uh, or $15 million a year until we get it spent, um, in, in, um, to fix our roads? Do you have a plan on that?
Yeah, so, uh, the, the 40 million in bonds is, is so that we can get as much impact on the front end as we possibly can. Uh, so we'd have, uh, anywhere from seven, uh, six to seven million dollars, uh, annually that we can spend, uh, out of the, the fund as well. Uh, so, so, uh, uh, infrastructure is, is the order of the day, and, and some of... So infrastructure is the order of the day, and some of it will be handled from the standpoint of our bond issue. But then the fact that we've got that additional modernization funds that we can use for one-time expenditures is also going to be made available to us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would encourage you to really go big on this and put as much money as we can out into the roads as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
Because too often, we haven't spent our money, you know, as much as we had, we set aside, then not spend it all by the end of the fiscal year. And so I would encourage you to go really big here and do as many roads covered as possible.
I don't think that's going to be a problem in this administration. You know, we've got seventy-five million dollars in resurfacing projects right now, forty-six million of which is coming from the Federal Highway Administration. We have to come up with a twenty-nine million dollar match. And so we can potentially use some of this money for that federal match, but also use some other sources. Hopefully, we'll be able to prevail upon the state to help us with our match as well. And we're not quite there yet, and we'll know better once we get closer to the legislative session, how much we can count on from the state, and we can back that out of the bond issue.
Okay, thanks, sir. I would encourage my fellow council members to support this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Hairston?
One more point, Mr. President. We have a mandate from Capital One to close this transaction, but given that we locked in the rate, we want to do so as soon as possible before they crept up. So we have a mandate from them to close by September thirtieth. So we will be working with the administration, Ms. Jordan, Ms. Harris, to try to get a draft of the minutes as soon as possible. We plan to revalidate these bonds, given that the structure has changed. We'll go back through the court, and we have every intention to be able to close and execute and provide the city the money by September thirtieth.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Six zero, thank you. Item thirty-two.
Order amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five municipal budget.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved improperly. Second, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Stokes, how do you vote? In favor, all right, seven zero, thank you. Item thirty-three.
Order authorizing a payment of twenty-five thousand dollars to Working Together Jackson in support of the market value analysis project.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any questions or comments about item thirty-three?
I got a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The, I remember this coming up during the Working Together Jackson session we had during the campaign. Can somebody tell me what exactly a market analysis is? I didn't understand exactly what the process is on, what goes into it, what are the receivables for?
Mr. President, for me.
Mr. Mayor?
The reinvestment fund based in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, is who's conducting the market value analysis. In the past forty, fifty years, they've been able to help attract in excess of five billion dollars to communities in Brooklyn, in Philadelphia, in Baltimore, and some smaller communities. And normally, what the market value analysis is, it becomes the foundation, if you will, for a comprehensive plan. It looks at data, things like how many potholes do you have in the city? Where is the activity in the city? Where is it moving towards? What's your affordable housing looking like? What is your rental property looking like? Home ownership? Where is the crime taking place largely? Things along that line. It's data-driven, and as I say, that becomes the basis for putting a comprehensive plan together, and it will help us drive our decision-making better because we have some concrete data that is the foundation of it.
I follow up.
Sure.
Well, I hope they can tell us, give us some advice on what to do about our situation with the apartment complex.
Well, I don't know if they're going to drill down that deep, but yeah, looking at where there are issues with quality decent affordable housing is one of the things that they'll be analyzing.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
Just one quick question. Working Together Jackson, what's their past history of performing these type of market value analysis?
Working Together Jackson?
Yes.
They're not, they're not, they're the sponsoring entity for the market value analysis, but the MVA itself is being prepared by the reinvestment fund out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you. And they're just a tool to further this?
Yes, yes. Working Together Jackson is a sponsor of this MVA. And the reinvestment fund is actually going to conduct the actual analysis.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Clay?
Okay. In here, I see the cost is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and they're asking for twenty-five thousand. Are they assured that they're going to have the other hundred thousand?
Yeah, we had a meeting a few days, it's actually more than the hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's closer to about three hundred thousand. And Hope Enterprise hosted a meeting a couple of weeks ago where folks went around the room and basically pwned up the money. We had banks, corporations, some churches that all stepped up, and so, yes, we've raised the money.
All right, question.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is one of the things they're going to look at. If not, hopefully we can get Jackson State. These burnt structures.
Yes, they are going to be looking at that as well.
Because we asked the fire department, I know they're trying to do something about these abandoned houses catching on fire. But once we have fires in this city, the houses just stand.
Right.
And sometimes where we got to have a plan, money, everything else, so we can tear some of these burnt structures down. We still think it might be a health issue with these burnt structures, the smoke and what the children going in there playing and inhaling and everything. So I support this item. That's a step forward with many others where we can get some data, and that's what you keep saying. We got to have data to be able to try to get money because we can't just go ask people for help, and they ask you, well, where's the data? What do you have? And you say, well, we don't have the data yet. So we're going to have the data.
Yes, sir.
To take with us to show them.
Yes, sir. As part of the analysis, they're looking at all of the tax forfeited property, that which is in possession of the city as well as in possession of the state, and the runout structures is also going to be able to be tallied. So, yes, we'll have all that information.
I keep up with the Maple Street Apartments and the property in my neighborhood, and what I've noticed is that it's all city property that someone found a way to take from the city. So we work with the tax seller so we can get it back under the title of the city because the city owes no taxes on these properties, but yet it's not in the city name anymore long. So I support what you're doing. I support the idea that we got to monitor a lot of things, and we must start moving toward a lot more data. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments about item thirty-three? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item thirty-four.
Order authorizing mayor to execute with liquidity services operations LLC DBA Gov deals for an online auction operations for the city of Jackson.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly. Second, okay, we had a lengthy discussion about this yesterday in a work session. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item thirty-five.
Order ratifying payment to Moore's Drywall LLC pursuant to the emergency declaration for the Jackson Police Department Precinct One.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly. Second, any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Thirty-six.
Order approving payment of invoices for goods and services received by the Jackson Police Department from the Mississippi Forensic Laboratory DPS Crime Lab and authorizing the Jackson Police Department to pay the Mississippi Forensic Laboratory DPS Crime Lab for future services related to analytical fees within the department's allocated budget.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly. Second, any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item thirty-seven.
Order authorizing mayor to execute the third amendment to the antenna site license agreement with Alltel Corporation doing business as Verizon Wireless for the property located at twelve forty-two Wiggins Road, Suite eleven.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second, we had a pretty good discussion yesterday about several of these items, thirty-seven through forty, and the questions or comments today, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Item thirty-eight.
Order authorizing mayor to execute the third amendment to the antenna site license agreement with Cell Co. Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless for property located at three oh one North State Street, Suite twenty.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly. Second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Thirty-nine.
Order authorizing mayor to execute the fourth amendment to the antenna site license agreement with Alltel Corporation doing business as Verizon Wireless for property located at three thousand and a half St. Charles Street, Suite twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly. Second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Seven zero, thank you, colleagues. Forty.
Order authorizing mayor to execute the fourth amendment to the antenna site license agreement with Alltel Corporation doing business as Verizon Wireless for property located at eighty Outer Circle Drive, Suite twenty-six.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly. Second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you, colleagues. Item forty-one.
Forty-two.
Forty, oh yeah, we did forty-one, I'm sorry. Forty-two.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Capital City Convention Center Commission in Visit Jackson for the operation and management of Thal Yamar Hall.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any questions or comments, colleagues? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can you just kind of bring us up to speed the direction that you see Thal Yamar Hall going and why we want to convention, commission, and visit Jackson to be in the leadership roles?
Mr. President. Thank you, councilman. Yes, the Convention Center Commission staff has been doing an excellent job over the last few years since we got rid of the third-party operator. We took that operation in-house, and whereas we were looking at sometimes two, two and a half million dollar deficit, that staff has gotten the convention centers operating costs down to around minus fifty-five thousand versus two and a half million. So they've done a great job of being able to manage their resources. We think that they can bring that same kind of leadership to Thal Yamar and have it operate in the black or as close to that as we possibly can. And likewise, Visit Jackson is a known and very expert in their ability to market, to market our city, to market the convention center, which is what they do in partnership with the convention center right now, and we want them to help us market Thal Yamar. We have some additional things that we need to do to get Thal Yamar where it needs to go, where it needs to be. One is that we made the decision to replace the elevators because we want reliability, and we don't have reliability right now with the existing elevator. The escalator is going to be replaced by stairwells. It's a commonsensical approach. We have unreliability with our escalator. Most facilities of this kind don't even have escalators, so we're going to replace that with stairwells. We've got the mitigation that we've got to do on some further asbestos that we found in the facility, and once we do that, we'll be able to hang the fire curtain in the facility. There are some plumbing issues and some issues with our bathrooms that have just been discovered, and we're addressing those. And as a short-term, kind of long-term, but more short-term measure, we're going to add two elevators. That will be done in the spring, but the things I mentioned before, the elevators, are things that we'll have done by the end of the year, and we are in the process of putting together some other advisors who are going to help us really get Thal Yamar to the point where it needs to be. And we're working with folks who are in the business of operating facilities like that going into the future, particularly as it relates to our Broadway shows, and you'll be hearing more about that coming partnership as well in the coming weeks.
They, on the grounds, they put, I guess, a statue monument on the side. Is it going to stay? Is it going to be renovated? It looks like it's falling apart, and it go back to the days when we'd have those different shows during the summer months.
Well, we're definitely going to bring the fountain back and get it back operational. I think you're talking about the statue that's on the east side of the building. No decision's been reached about its future. I think that was someone's idea during the time we had a show, and it just kind of stayed there. We haven't made any decisions. We've got bigger fish to fry than figuring that part out right now. But we are committed to getting Thal Yamar back to where it needs to be, and back as a showcase for our community. And we've got a lot of interest in folks coming back, but this fall, we've got pretty much washed this fall out. We're not going to have the building ready by then, but we do fully expect that it'll be ready by the first of the year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more questions? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some apprehension about just joining this with, under the Convention Center. Thal Yamar Hall's a unique venue, and it was, seemed to do best when Michael Raff was running it, who had expertise in that particular sort of arts and culture side of the entertainment and venue and business. And we just got the documents, a ten-page document here about the agreement. We got it five minutes into the meeting, so the, I think it's prudent for us to have the time to go through and look at the agreement in full and maybe, you know, talk with some of our friends in the arts business. And there's so many people that really love the Thal Yamar Hall and are big fans of it and want to see it prosper and bring in lots of programs just like you do. And so I would appreciate the time to go through the document and not just giving it to us as the meeting was getting underway. And so that's what, I'm against it until I have a chance to study the document. Thank you.
Drew Martin, City Attorney, I was just going to add that we are still working out some final details of things. Ms. Miller's in here as well, so that it's actually not quite in a finalized version anyway. We're just trying to get you the drafts as they're ready. There's one last night, another one this morning, and there'll be another one shortly.
Ms. Clay?
Can we table it?
Mayor, is there something you want to do?
I would prefer we not table it. We need to keep this process flowing. Counselors just indicated that the document is not in its final form, but to table it puts us that much further behind, and if we could keep the process going, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
President.
Mr. Parkinson, you like you about to sit up first.
I'm sorry?
Do you have something?
Yeah, I feel good with the gist of where this direction is going. I think this is a crucial partnership for us. I think it'll open new opportunities for us. I think they've got fantastic expertise. I think they have a proven track record of results. I think realistically, this is the best path forward to getting Thal Yamar, which we all want up and running as quickly as possible and ensuring its long-term success.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes?
Mr. President, I don't really like the idea when the council member's saying that they need time to study something, not giving them that time. This is one of those things, and I think I made the motion that the citizen, the city, they just been let down about Thal Yamar Hall. And I just feel if we table it, they're going to start feeling, well, here we go again. Even if we had to read and do other things, let's keep the ball rolling so that the citizens won't lose confidence in us. If they thinking that, well, they just talking, and we heard from the former mayor was going to be open by the end of the week, and that didn't happen, so we got the same old thing again. I would just hope that legal would... I would just hope that legal, with me with Councilman Ward-Wan, make sure that he feel comfortable. What's going on? Because you can't just give us something at the last minute then say, vote on it, because these citizens are going to say, you didn't read what you had. And you know you got to say, well, they didn't give us nothing. No, you got to read and be prepared. But we can't disappoint these citizens who are feeling good about the city for the first time in a mighty, mighty long time.
Amen.
That we make them think that we going backwards instead of moving forward with Thal Yamar Hall. I don't go there a lot, but for those people who go to shows and everything else, they really miss it. And this is a pulling point for the whole state of Mississippi. Thal Yamar Hall is just not Jackson. People come from all over this state to come to Thal Yamar Hall, and we trying to get a product that's going to be something they won't say, we just hear of and put something together, and ain't no good. So I'm going to support the mayor if I can on this one.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
I'd like to concur with my colleague, Mr. Parkinson and Councilman Stokes, and this effort, we need to move ahead. And this, the way we've been proceeding, the city ownership and the city management, we need to look for other options, and I think this is a viable option. We know the success of Visit Jackson, and Mr. Thigpen trusts him immensely to get this thing going. So I will support his item, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Just on the cost here on the bottom of the, I guess, second page, it's got, for the first year, the operating cost, I guess we pay this to the Jackson Convention Center, plus the management fee of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're paying Jackson, I guess that comes out of the Health and Human Services or the Cultural and Human Services out of their budget? Is that where that's coming from?
Yes, sir.
So that three hundred and fifty thousand comes out of their budget?
And whatever revenue they're able to generate as well.
They get to keep the revenue, or they...
No, yes, where is it coming from? In part, part of the cost for the operation will come out of revenue generated.
But we're saying, this, we're voting on paying them three hundred and fifty thousand as a management fee, and then the second year it goes down to two hundred thousand, and third year is two hundred thousand. So that's all out of the Culture and Human Services budget, correct? And then...
I'd like to defer to Mr. Martin to respond to that question.
Okay.
Sure. So budget-wise, well, let me address it this way. Yes, the initial, first year of the agreement, as it's currently constituted, there would be a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment or appropriation from the city. Of that, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be considered a management fee that would go to the Convention Center and Visit Jackson. Two hundred thousand dollars of that is actually what we call, yesterday we referred to it as startup costs, but it's to go ahead and have a fund that the theater can be managed from. So whether that's fixing up the concession stands, whether that's making repairs to the bathrooms, whether that's general cleaning, they've got to have money to be able to start doing that. And so that would be money that would be operating costs essentially to get them started.
So as the repair costs go forward, do... Who pays the repair costs, ongoing repair costs, any other costs that come up?
The Convention Center will be responsible for repairs and maintenance to the theater under this agreement.
So we stop paying for repairs of Thal Yamar Hall?
That's the idea, yes.
That's the idea.
Well, so there's always, where does the money come from and what, does the money run out? What are the revenues and all that? But assuming that the theater succeeds, assuming that everything works out, the revenue that will be generated by the theater over the course of the agreement in the future should fund those things. If it does not, for some reason, then of course that comes back to the city.
Now, are we still covering debt service for the Convention Center as well on their forty million dollars in bond issues?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. Ms. Clay?
My only question is, budget-wise, where does this put us in terms of what we're doing in terms of the budget that we're coming up with for the fifteen? And if we're paying three hundred and fifty plus operating costs, there should not be a lot of operating costs, but there are operating costs, and we're paying for energy. What is the total amount that's been budgeted in last year's budget, and why can't we wait since all these repairs have to be done and we know we're working on it, and it's not opening to January, to see where we are when we budget?
I don't know what the budget line item is. I can't speak to that. I can speak to the terms of the agreement, which you did mention, and I didn't say it in response to Councilman Foot, that the first year of the agreement, the city would also, as you said, be responsible for the utilities of the theater. That's estimated to be approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That number's in the agreement. The Convention Center would fund the rest of the operating costs. Beginning in year two, the Convention Center would cover all of those expenses going forward.
But I just want to know the budget amount, is this amount close to that amount, or is it more?
That I can't answer.
Well, Mr. President, as it relates to the capital costs, as I said a few minutes ago when we were having the discussion on the forty million dollar bond issue, most of those capital costs are going to come out of that bond issue and not from the city's general fund budget.
I understand that, but I'm saying, the bottom line is what? I understand we paying for the repairs out of the capital, so that that part doesn't affect it at all. I'm just asking, how much do we generally budget for them on a yearly basis?
And I think these are some of the details that need to be worked out.
Smellin Becker. State your name, please.
Fidelis Smellin Becker.
Thank you.
Inter MCF. So typically, their budget is about that amount, about three fifty, right? And that's the amount that's getting transferred to the Convention Center. But I know there are some details that we need to work through.
So do they pay the electrical bill out of that three fifty, or they get it on top of that?
Yeah. Yeah, so the three fifty essentially did include utility costs when Human and Cultural Services set their budget, and so I think those are some of the details that we need to work through.
All right. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? All right, five-two, thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Item forty-three.
Order authorizing amendment to the July 2nd, 2024, order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Sandra R. Liddell, and Ben Wiggins remodeling for the use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to implement housing repair activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, those tiny homes, I don't know if you had a chance to get up to speed on those tiny homes off capers. Is it a reality? Is the money walked away? Is there anything you can tell us? You rather do it by memo?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
The Tiny Homes Project has suffered a setback, and the reason for it is this. The scope under which the project was originally approved by the city council has changed pretty significantly. And what we were told in conversations with the State HUD office and some of the regional people is that it probably would be better for us to rebid the whole thing rather than risk a future finding. And it also would require our going back and doing an amendment to our plan that we submit to HUD every year. It's just untenable. So what I've committed to, Ms. Patellus White, who is the director and founder of the Jackson Resource Center, is that we're going to look elsewhere for funding for the project, but we're not going to pursue this project with community development block grant funds at this time.
Now, the money is that already have been allocated. I don't know how much, and maybe you can get us a memo. I don't know if councilmen know how much already been given. I heard it's millions. We're not, I guess the main question is, we're not liable. The city's not liable for that.
None of the funds have been dispersed.
None of... That's what we need, because we heard money had been dispersed.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the additional thoughts on this issue. I would ask that we ensure that we have plenty of public comment as we leading up to the RFP, and that we make sure that we get the temperature of the communities that's going to be impacted.
Yes, sir. My understanding is that the only money that the Resource Center has in hand right now is money from the Development Bank, Regional Development Bank out of Atlanta and also out of Dallas. So they've got that money, it's in the bank. They also have a financial commitment from Hope Enterprise, and that commitment still stands. But because the scope has changed so much in terms of what the city council originally agreed to versus where the Jackson Resource Center is now, we just don't think it's a good idea for us to move forward with a commitment of HUD funds to the project. But we are, I believe in the project, and I think that it would be a good project to deal and address the homeless problem within our city, but we're going to try to find other sources for funding. And I get your point about input from the community and having a public comment and public meetings about how we go forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any more questions or comments about item forty-three? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item forty-four.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the letter agreement to the Section 108 along between the City of Jackson, Mississippi and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving in properly, second. We had a good discussion about this item yesterday in work session. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item forty-five.
Order ratifying procurement of parts and repair services from various vendors and authorizing payment to said vendors from the Department of Public Works, municipal garage division.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for a public works director?
Thank you, Mr. President, if I might. We're still, we're close on making a final decision on how Public Works is going to operate moving forward. We have a choice of taking everything in-house, doing a hybrid, taking it all out on the contract. We're leaning towards putting a hybrid together. We have had some conversations with some candidates that we hope will get us to a final decision within the next couple of weeks.
I ask that question because we keep hearing about water, and I was one of those who said we needed the federal government to step in to make sure we had water, we have water, and those kind of things now.
Councilman Stokes?
I know. This is our last one we have on Public Works, but my concern was this, Mr. President. If they collecting money from past years, why is it that the city not being reimbursed? They not collecting from when they started. They collecting from when the city had the water. So those people, the City of Jackson, somebody need to fight to get us some of our money back. It's a thought.
Mr. Hartley, can you put that on your next agenda for the Public Works?
And the topic would be...
That's a great thought.
The topic would be...
Get with Councilman Stokes about that item. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I would just say that what I've been told is that when Jackson Water took over, they started from that point in terms of their collections. My understanding is that they've not attempted to go back and collect money that theoretically was owed to the city prior to Jackson Water taking over.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, any more questions or comments about item forty-five? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Ms. Clay, did you vote?
I did.
Okay. Seven zero? All right, thank you. Item forty-six.
Order authorizing payment to Energy Mississippi LLC to remove an overhead span of power lines, then reinstall upon completion of construction of the Beasley Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item forty-seven.
Order accepting the proposal of Lewis Electric to relocate signal power service for the intersection of Peachtree Street and Woodrow Wilson Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moving in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item forty-eight.
Order reviewing and continuing August 29th, 2022, state of emergency.
So moved.
It's been moving in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item forty-eight? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item forty-nine.
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item forty-nine? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item fifty.
Resolution of the Jackson City Council encouraging the assistance of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, ATF, in addressing gun violence in the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving in properly, second. Mr. Stokes, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, some of the gun violence that we are experiencing in the City of Jackson, our police department is doing a wonderful job, the Shaft Department and state, but the federal government need to provide some assistance. I know they doing some. A lot of these guns are stolen. We must send a message to these criminals that everyone is on board to stop this gun violence. Once they realize that the federal government's taking an active role, a role that they're out front in terms of you can see the visibility of the federal government, then a lot of these young people that's going crazy with these guns and that gun mentality will cease and desist. So we just asking by resolution for ATF to get more involved in the City of Jackson, and let's do something about the gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Colleagues, let's go ahead and take out, well, knock out, item fifty-three. If you could show me by a show of hands if you received your reports. Councilman Stokes?
But I don't do email and all this.
I know. All right, all right.
Old-fashioned way, paper.
Okay, so now we go to discussion item fifty-one. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting, a community meeting over at Broad Street Restaurant around about ten days ago, a week ago, something like that, and about the animal control situation for the City of Jackson. And I was surprised at how many people showed up on short notice, very engaged, very really into this issue, and they were very discouraged about some of the stories they've heard about animal control in the City of Jackson and the challenges that the community faces, and they didn't feel like it really reflected the values or the way that the animal control was being operated or basically not closed down didn't really reflect the values of a lot of the citizens across the city. Pets are a huge part of people's lives, both cats and dogs, and they want to see them treated humanely and done with professional services. I don't think we meet up, the city's efforts are up to best practices or would be considered best practices in other cities of our size. So I visited with them, and Mr. Nicklaut was there representing the city, the administration. They appreciated his receptiveness and engagement with the process. And what I'd like to recommend, Mr. Mayor, would be, for you to consider, would be setting up a task force on animal control with a lot of these engaged citizens. Ms. Jackson showed up today to talk to us about it, and she made some, you know, very important points, and I think it's something that we would really score a lot of points with a lot of the citizens if we really upgraded our efforts in animal control and became, you know, a good example of how the city should handle, you know, lost dogs, cats, and, you know, pets, whatever, in a professional manner. And I think you... and, you know, pets, whatever, in a professional manner. And the, I think you'd have a big turnout for people who'd want to serve on a task force like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Foot. We had a meeting on yesterday with our animal control group here with the city, and I'm looking at our task forces right now, and actually do not see any readily obvious task forces where we can address this matter. So I would not have a problem establishing another task force for that purpose.
Thank you. And I do recall, colleagues, we budgeted, what, four hundred and sixty-some thousand for animal control last year? I'm not sure what's come of that, but maybe we can definitely look at that again for this budget season. All right. We do not have any legal matters to go into executive session about, correct? All right. I'm sure Mr. Stokes is happy about that. Next, colleagues, we're going to move into the presentation and proclamation. The mayor reached out to me, and he has something that he would like to do today. And so, as they said, Jackson State, please fine tune your sensor apparatus and fix your ears to what he's about to say. Thank you. Yes, please.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, of the audience and the citizens of Jackson, I'd like to ask Chief Joe Wade if he would join me at the podium. And Chief Wade, I think you have something to tell me.
Yes, I do.
Publicly, that is.
Yes. First of all, it's been an honor.
State your name for the record. I gotta be petty. Go ahead. State your name for the record, please.
Joseph Wade Senior, Chief of Police of the Jackson Police Department. Honorable Mayor, thank you. I do have a speech prepared, but until you do your portion, today I am tendering my retirement from the Jackson Police Department after twenty-nine years of service to the Jackson Police Department.
Last week, or early in the week last week, Chief Wade reached out to me, and we met, and he told me what was going on. He's had twenty-nine years as our, in law enforcement, the last few years of which he has served as Chief. The stress of the jobs are taking their toll on him, and he said, Mayor, I gotta, I gotta resign. He has an opportunity to take another position that's a lot less stressful with, for a lot more money. And, you know, when I looked at it, I said, Joe, you can retire with eighty percent of your current salary, and you have an opportunity to earn another salary. You'd be crazy not to take the job. You'd be crazy not to tender your resignation. And so I regretfully accepted his resignation, and today I publicly do so. But before I go any further, Mr. President, I'd like to read a proclamation that we have prepared for Joe Wade. I won't, I won't read the title of it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, there may be an issue with protocol here because it's not printed on the agenda. We need to add this.
So moved.
All right. It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments? No, very good. All in favor? All right. You may proceed, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a proclamation honoring Joseph Wade Senior. Whereas Joseph, Chief Joseph Wade has faithfully served the City of Jackson for nearly three decades, dedicating his career to upholding the highest standards of law enforcement and public safety. And whereas his appointment as Chief of Police on August second, two thousand and twenty-three, following distinguished service as interim chief, further strengthening the Jackson Police Department's leadership and integrity. And whereas Chief Wade has championed vital initiatives to improve officer retention, enhance inter-agency partnerships, and build meaningful relationships with the community. And whereas his vision for making the Jackson Police Department a premier law enforcement agency continues to inspire and empower officers and citizens. Now therefore, on the occasion of his retirement, I, Mayor John Horn, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Jackson, do hereby proclaim August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five to be Joseph Wade Day in the City of Jackson. And let all citizens join in honoring Chief Joseph Wade for his unwavering service, outstanding leadership, and enduring commitment to our community's progress and safety. The City of Jackson wishes him the very best in all of his future endeavors. Signed on this day, John Horn, Mayor of the City of Jackson. Mr. President, I don't know if it's appropriate, you know, I'm new to this. But in the next fell swoop, I'd like to make another announcement, that in the interim, our next police chief is going to be Sheriff Tyree Jones. He will serve. He will serve as interim chief, if you would come forward, Chief Sheriff. You know, as I was looking at around as to who I would want to take the helm of this police department, I could think of no one better than the sheriff of Heinz County. And Sheriff Jones has made it plain to me. He said, hey, this is just temporary. This is not going to be permanent. But I wanted a strong, level hand, steady hand, to take the helm as we say goodbye to Chief Wade, and we want the police department to have a steadier hand going forward as we possibly can. And so we are asking, and he has accepted, Sheriff Tyree Jones to serve as interim chief of police for the City of Jackson. And, Mr. President, if I may ask, Chief Sheriff Jones, if you'd make a few remarks?
In the words of Kenneth Stokes, Chief Sheriff.
So I do have some words that I have put together. First of all, good afternoon to the esteemed council, Mayor Horn, other elected appointed officials, members of the law enforcement community. I am honored to accept the role of interim chief of police for the Jackson Police Department. During this important transition period, I do so humbly, I do so with humility and a deep respect for the men and women of the Jackson Police Department and a steadfast commitment to public safety in our capital city. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to my dear friend and retiring police chief, Joseph Wade, for his unwavering leadership and distinguished service to the City of Jackson over the past three decades. His legacy of dedication and integrity has left an indelible mark on our community, and I wish him continued blessings in his well-earned retirement. I also want to thank Mayor Horn for his trust in my leadership and for his continued commitment to the safety and well-being of Jackson's residents. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve in this capacity and to support the department through this period of transition. But again, let me be clear. I have no aspirations to permanently hold a position of chief of police, nor do I seek a confirmation. My focus is ensuring stability, continuity, professionalism within the department while actively participating with the committed-led task with selecting the next chief of police to serve in Mayor Horn's administration. I am committed to a transparent and thoughtful selection process, one that reflects the values, needs, and aspirations of our community. My responsibility as sheriff of Heinz County will continue uninterrupted, and I remain fully engaged in serving the citizens of our county with the same dedication and resolve that has guided my tenure. Together, we will move forward with unity, purpose, and a shared vision for a safer Jackson. Again, thank you all.
And, Mr. President, members of the council, as well as members of the audience, I'd like to ask that we recognize Supervisor Robert Graham, President of the Heinz County Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Morning.
First of all, I'm honored to be in front of the council, along with the mayor. We're here to state that we support the chief of police, Joseph Wade, and whatever his endeavor will be from this point forward. We're also here to let everyone know that we support Sheriff Jones. Sheriff Jones has been the sheriff of Heinz County for quite so many years, and we've supported him. He's done a tremendous job. We don't want to lose him. When we talked with the mayor, we've talked about a lot of different things, but we do not want to lose him as our sheriff. But we also support the City of Jackson. And me personally, I support the mayor. I support the mayor and what he's doing. I know which road he's trying to go down. I know what he wants to do as it relates to law enforcement and the safety of the citizens of the City of Jackson, and he is all in. And by him saying that he is all in, that means that Heinz County is all in for whatever we have to do to make Jackson and Heinz County the safest place that he can be. I applaud the mayor's efforts, and we are here to support him, the new sheriff, who is the chief, or the chief who's the sheriff. Whichever one, it just means that we're here to make citizens not only feel safe, but let them know that they are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, President Graham. And, Mr. President, one final thing. We want this process to be swift, efficient, but well-thought-out. And toward that end, I have two co-chairmen of the law enforcement task force that we have set up, have been working on setting up. They will be working to populate this task force. But two co-chairmen that I've selected to help move us in this process forward are former U.S. Marshal, Mr. George White. Mr. White has twenty-nine years of experience with the Highway Safety Patrol and nine years of experience as a U.S. Marshal. He is serving as the co-chairman of our task force, and George is there in the back. He'll have remarks at the press conference a little while, a little bit from now. And also, as co-chairman, former Mississippi Highway Patrol, Highway Safety Patrol Chief, also the director of the Mississippi Bureau of Investigation, and now the gentleman who serves as the, I'm going to get it right, Colonel, Director of Administration of Justice Program at Mississippi College. He's got, just earned his doctorate degree, and he's helping Mississippi College stand up a stellar program in law enforcement there. But Colonel Charles Haynes will serve as co-chair. And we want these gentlemen to know that they have our support in being able to move quickly to, number one, come up with new recommendations on how we can better the Jackson Police Department, but also to work expeditiously in helping us select a new chief of police. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service. And, Mr. President, that concludes my remarks, and I think that we all would owe Chief Wade a standing ovation for his service.
Please, please, please be seated. Please. First of all, giving all honor and glory to God, who's ahead of my life.
Amen.
Without him, I could not have survived twenty-nine years and nine months at the Jackson Police Department, and the last two years and three months as police chief. Lot of praying, lot of late nights, early mornings. I started my journey back in nineteen ninety-five. This is twenty twenty-five. I started this journey when I was a ripe, young age of twenty-four years old. Now I'm fifty-four years old. And yes, when I called the mayor, I did say, yes, my blood pressure is up. It is. Because we're faced with so many issues and constant issues and crime and quality of life issues. I don't just take that lightly as a number or stat or data. I internalize that. I take it home with me. I empathize with people. When I'm awakened in the middle of the night and a kid has been killed, or elderly person killed, or baby killed, I can't roll back over and go to sleep. I lose sleep. It hurts. When I became the chief, I not only became the chief, my family became the chief. They see what's happening behind the curtains. They see the trauma that we deal with as law enforcement. When I called the mayor last week, we had a great conversation. I'm glad that he entertained it. And by the end of my speech to him, he said, Chief, I understand. Chief, I understand. The timing, I would have to be put up for confirmation next month. I took a confirmation vote at home. It was unanimous. So there was no need for me to come before you, knowing that I'm losing that support from close family and friends as to moving forward because they see what's happening behind the curtain. But I have to tout that I've had the honor of leading the greatest police department in the State of Mississippi for the past two years and three months. We have gotten our respect back in the community. We now have community trust and public trust. We now have trust in the law enforcement community. When I took the helm, we did not have that trust anymore. We're working with our local county, state, and federal partners. They now trust us to do the right thing. We now have the trust of the media. I have been extremely transparent about the things that's going on in our community, whether it's good, bad, or ugly, we're going to talk about it. We're now neighbor's compliant. That was a daunting task. We're now neighbor's compliant. When I took the helm, we were the murder capital of this entire country. In two thousand and twenty-one, we had a hundred and fifty-seven people who lost their life in this city. The murder capital per capita. Last year this time, we were at seventy-five homicides. Today, as I sit here, we're thirty-seven. That is a fifty percent reduction in homicides in this city. But I did not do it alone. I did it via the hard work of the men and women of JPD. They deserve everything that they get, everything that they're owed to do their jobs. There's pay raises and the equipment that they need to do their jobs. I fully support them, and I will always support them. A couple other things. Now, I said this way back in June of two thousand and twenty-three. I would rather leave prematurely than overstay my welcome. I would rather leave prematurely than overstay my welcome. The average lifespan, well, not life, the average tenure of a chief in this country is two and a half years. That's per the FBI data. So I'm about three months away from y'all kicking me out, right? So I understand that, and I get it. But what I am gonna miss, there was, I guess there was a social media post posted Sunday night or Monday, and I've been receiving so many calls from the community. Chief, please tell me this is not true. Chief, please don't leave us. Chief, please don't leave us. But what kind of bothered me is I sat in the vehicle before I walked over, I had police officers texting me. Chief, please don't leave. Chief, please don't leave. That meant the world to me. The data is one thing, the accomplishments is one thing. But I know that I left the Jackson Police Department in a better place than what I inherited. God, please, you know, please continue to bless and watch over these officers. I ask that the community, please continue to bless and watch over them and support them. Support them. What I've seen in our community in some situations, people want the police, but they don't want to be policed.
Okay.
They want the police, but they don't want to be policed. They're criticized, persecuted, prosecuted. And they're putting their lives on the line every single day in our community. They deserve better. I want to give a shout out to my good friend, Councilman Kenneth I. Stokes. I love you, man. Thank you. Last year, he was standing there with me when the media was asking me back in January of two thousand and twenty-four, what was I going to do about homicides in the City of Jackson? And my answer made everybody kind of stand back and look, you know, hey, chief is going crazy. I said, I was gonna do what, Councilman?
Cut it in half.
Cut it in half. And today I stand here, it was cut in half. Promise kept. God bless you. And yes, I'm turning in my chief's hat for a director's hat. God is good. Thank you so much.
We wish you the best, Chief.
Thank you, uh, Mister President, members of the council. Uh, we know that the media probably has a lot of questions and want to get some face time. Uh, so we're gonna, uh, repair to the foyer, uh, for some, uh, for a press conference and some questions and answers. And we'll also be hearing from the members of our transition team as well. Thank you, Mister President, ladies and gentlemen.
Mister Mayor, is, is Chief Sheriff on the clock right now?
No, no, uh, Chief Sheriff, Chief Sheriff, we'll, 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 we'll take, take.
We did, we did. Got you. Thank y'all.
And, and Mister President, uh, if time allows, we'd love for you to join us.
Thank you so much. Well, that means nobody has anything else to say. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move to closing. Thank you, Mayor. Um, any closings, colleagues?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Stokes?
Thank you. Uh, Mister President, could we close in honor of Mrs. Mary Ann Whitney Youngblood, Mrs., Mrs. Rosa Lee Brown. Excuse us. And Mr. Donna Jamar Handy. And, uh, I just want to say that Chief Wade has been a pleasure to work with, to know the way he loved the community and fought for people. And he really loved those children, coached basketball with the cartoon league that became part of the police league. He believed in saving the children. He worked hard to save the children going the wrong way. For those who don't live in those neighborhoods, where the dope boy recruit kids in elementary school, they first get them to act like they washing their cars and making money washing their cars. For washing cars, they didn't have them running drugs to people. And from that, they slowly sucked in to the whole world of being a drug boy. This man fought against it. He didn't make excuses for it. And he let parents know, fight for your children. I would truly miss this, this Chief of Police. I know he cared. I miss all of them. We've had some great police chiefs in Jackson. But I do know the sheriff chief would do a wonderful job. He cares also. I passed out, uh, a letter, Mister President, um, that was sent, passed out in my neighborhood and different parts of the city. Voodoo Kids, a child of mortgage. Where you have people passing out crazy, crazy things in neighborhoods. And then it said, let us hope Kenneth Stokes is not affiliated with, I don't feel they were voodoo or nothing anyway. But I just want members of the bodies to see these kind of things so that if it come in their war in their neighborhood about them, just keep putting God first and keep doing your job. But I'm gonna get this to the FBI. But I know it's a, it's a sad day today when you lose Chief Wade. We were there with a police officer that were hurt, um, last week. And we said, when she hurt, we all hurt. And that's what we must feel about our police department. When these police officers hurt, we all hurt. And I want to thank members of the bodies who came, who prayed and everything else. We thank out so much. It's a sad damn war, three. But we know God can do anything but fail. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, uh, any other announcements? I'd like to, uh, basically to say the same. It's a sad damn war, five. Sad damn war, two. Yeah, uh, look, uh, when, uh, before this chief came on, I would go to bed with gunshots in the background and wake up with gunshots. Not anymore. This chief has, has showed us the example of what a chief should be like and how they should lead. And we are so grateful for him. And, uh, you know, if I, if I could pull his, pull at his feet to keep him from leaving, I probably would, but I think this is for the best and he's expressed that as well. Uh, so are there any other, would you like to make any comments or anyone else like to say anything with the chief? Okay, any other announcement?
Could I ask one thing, Mister President?
Go right ahead.
The budget.
Yes, sir.
I'm not only committed, but I know normally we take motion before we make the final vote. Um, the concern I have is that, um, we need to move some divisions. And when you move a division, that mean the money follow where it's going so that we have more money for police because we must have more police officers in this city to make sure we safe. We got to be safe, number one. Will we have a process where we make motions before close to the deadline, uh? Have, has it been established? Motions just mean that, um, you heard all the presentations. Uh, I so moved, and this is council's responsibility, that we merge. And if you look at when this city had, uh, this population before, because we losing population, you didn't have all the departments that you have. The planning department was a division worked directly under the mayor. Human and Culture Service and Parks and Rec was one. You know, those are the things, that's where you save money. And that's where you can shift money to police and, and make sure that you have a money to do everything that you need to do during the year. What happened, all money that you see in a budget is only projections. Well, for projection, sometimes it come in and sometimes it does not. But the key thing is, all money that's not spent by the end of the budget year is when next, next month, thirty-some days, all that money should go to the front balance. That mean projects that didn't happen, that money is in front balance. It's not still left out there.
Yes, sir.
That's money that used to be in the old days, front balance is money that the city councilmen could use in their war to do different projects. But the question I'm asking, and I don't know if it's been said, do we have a date for motions, number one? Number two, has anybody counted their votes on the budget? That mean you don't wait till the last minute and you don't have the votes to pass this budget. And if you don't pass the budget, you out of state law. That's the main thing now, count the votes. What are you unsatisfied with? How can we fix it? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Stokes. I, I think we, uh, uh, we're coordinating now between Councilmember Clay and Councilmember Stokes, uh, to try to look at that date. Thank you. And, uh, this is gonna be on a celebrated budget time, no doubt. Last year this time, we had already been into at least two weeks of, um, of finance, uh, committee meetings. So, uh, hopefully we can expedite those processes. But, uh, anything we can get, get from the administration for, if there's ain't going to be any change in organizational structure, then we're gonna need that as well of our consideration during the budget. So are there any other comments? Councilman Foot, Councilman Clay, Councilman Stokes? Councilman Parkinson, Councilman Thomas? Okay, all right, if nothing else, this body is adjourned.